Our April 5 Finance Committee meeting to an order. Tonight, it looks like we have a couple items on the agenda. The first one's Proposal Number Two. So I was wondering, Kathy, could you read the title for that one for us?
Proposal Number Two, 2021. A proposal of the Economic Council of the City of Lawrence, Indiana, establishing a 2021 budget for the City of Lawrence Stormwater Management District.
And do we have anybody from the administration or Stormwater here to talk with us about that tonight?
Counselor, this is Sri. I'm here.
Oh, hi Sri. Can you give us a little background on the ordinance, please?
Yeah, this is basically, like you know, that we created our own stormwater department that went into effect starting January 1st. So we are going to collect our first payment from Indianapolis, I think sometime in June, or if not sooner. So like as you can see from the PDF that Jason Fenwick put together, it shows us around we are receiving a little bit over a million dollars for last year. This year, because we had to pay back some of the stormwater fees that were, I mean, there was a lot more deductions coming out of last years. So it's a little bit lesser than it's going to be in the future years. So we are, as part of our ordinance to move out of stormwater from Indy and creating our own stormwater, we are also required to have a stormwater budget established for this year so we can spend that money that we are getting. So this is that ordinance that's, you know, usually from moving forward, I think it's going to be, this budget will be tied into the overall DPW budget from next year, since we already had that budget passed last November. So we had to bring it separately this year for the stormwater. And as you can see, we have broken it down into a couple of items in there. We are identifying a couple of smaller projects to be done this year, more like a maintenance contracts, most of them. And we are also having an O&M kind of a contract that we're going to pick a contractor to help us, you know, clean up when complaints come in, we can have an on-call contractor, just like we have for patching and sidewalk. We'll have somebody ready to go out and clean up some of those issues, you know, especially now people know that we are maintaining our own stormwater. We're going to start getting more calls. So we're going to have somebody stand by to do some of that work. So that's kind of a background on it. It already went through our stormwater board, you know, that was back in February, went through the stormwater board. That was also required for the ordinance, and it was approved. And now it's up to council, it's coming to your, to the full council and the finance committee for your approval and adoption.
Okay, thank you Sri. Do we have any questions from committee members?
So this is Lisa. I'm in full support of the ordinance. I did get a question, and I couldn't answer it, so maybe Sri can answer it. As it relates to, or this might be actually a Controller Fenwick question, so either Sri or Controller Fenwick. Line 431-010 for $500,000, and it's listed under other. I got the question of what encompasses that line, and I couldn't answer it. So if one of you could answer it, that would be great.
Sure, let me, let me open that up real quick. So the other, that is, that is the, so if you go back to the previous page, you know, O&M, so basically engineered, some of the $500,000 includes, you know, the Wallingwood drainage improvements, like 250, 400, and sewer, like the three projects that are identified in the previous page, the first three of them.
Okay.
If you go to the, you know, page number two, where it talks about, you know, expenses, it's broken down into, you know, Wallingwood Drainage Improvement, Franklin Road Drainage Improvement, Sewer Lining Project. So those four are, those three of those are added up and put it under, I mean, it's basically for the budget purposes. It's basically, a budget code is assigned for these three projects combined because these are more like service slash O&M projects, you know. So one, we just added it up and added as a $500,000. Basically, those include the three projects that are previously added inside in the other page.
Oh, okay.
So this is more like, the first page, the page number two, where it talks about expenses, breaks down the $1 million into various projects. And the last page that you're referring to is basically a budget code is assigned based on what the project, what type of, so basically, three of those projects belong to the same budget type, you know, it's another, it's a kind of a service project. So they're just combined, it's just for budget purposes.
Okay.
And Sri, then I'd like to ask a follow-up question to that. Then in going forward in the 2022 budget, will we see those projects in the other line as well, 431-01?
I mean, yeah, I think it's basically, if you look at, you know, even our overall project, overall budget that we adopted last year, a lot of the, you know, LISRF, I mean, sorry, the Lord Tag, MVH funds are created as one big part, 400 to 800,000. It's not actually broken down into projects. So the reason is, like, one might come in under, so that maybe we can pull POs, we are not tied to a certain dollar amount. So basically, that projects are just identified. I mean, moving forward, when we have projects, multiple projects, we will combine those into another category or some category that Jason, you know, Jason wants, and then, then we, once a project, if a project gets bid out, we pull the project purchase order from that category from New World. It's basically a mechanism in New World that, so when we pull a PO number, it goes into that 437, whatever, we pull it from there. So with one project, it's only 100,000, another one is 200,000. So the still, the total pot is still 500,000, you know?
Gotcha, gotcha, okay.
I'd just like to reiterate what Sri mentioned, so the first page of this document under the expense side lists the projects or the O&M that were planned to be spent, and then the second page lists the budget line items where we intend to pay for those projects from. So that 431-010 is other professional services, and since we will be hiring contractors to do Wallingwood Franklin Road and the Sewer Lining Projects, that's where we would pay for those varying contractors to do that work.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Giles, did you have a question?
This is for Controller Fenwick. I heard Sri say that we were going to put this into the regular budget under DPW for further times. Is that correct?
Yes, and I think what you'll see there, because this has to be in its own separate fund, it's a non-reverting fund, these funds can only be used for stormwater purposes that I haven't given much thought yet about the '22 budget, but my guess is, if it's within DPW, it'll be a second department or division within DPW for that reason, because these funds have to stay in their own separate fund and have their own uses.
Yeah, thank you so much. That's exactly, you know, what I was, wanted to make sure that I had understanding. One further question. When we, in the street department, you know, there's opportunities sometimes the state puts out there for us to, you know, match some dollars and get some projects done, pay the, whatever we've been able to do. Now that we are in the stormwater management business, are there similar opportunities and/or, and do we have anyone out looking to make sure that now we could use our dollars to get as much done as quickly as possible? It's kind of what I'm trying to get to.
Oh, that's a good point, yeah. In fact, last week, we got an email from state that there are some OKRA funds, it's a grant that's awarded, that we could go after if we have the match of 20% on stormwater. We don't know which probably, because OKRA, basically, we have to do an income survey and stuff. So based on some of the projects that we, we have, we, I mean, we might even look into, you know, we might even apply, we might not, we might not know, we might will get it, but since now we have the budget to put the match in, we can go after some of those grants. And I think we have a consultant already helping me, I mean, he does this for, they do this, they have been doing this for all of the state, they are already looking into other venues where they can, they, you know, they are letting me know when there is a venue available for us to go after some, or grants, mostly grants. And I think I was even told that in the last stimulus that was put together, that is, there might be some opportunities for, for the state to come up with a new grant for wastewater and stormwater projects. So these consultants, consultant is already looking into those because he's part of the core team who does that evaluation too. So, yeah, we are already starting now, but since we at least have some budget to spend, we can maximize it with some grants.
I am so excited to hear that. I think that is one of the best news that we've had. I'm in full support for this. So, Mr. Chair, would you entertain a motion to move this forward?
I have one other.
Just to see if Counselor Chevlat has a question.
Yeah, I just.
Go ahead.
So I see Counselor, or Controller Fenwick is there. I was trying to go back and find the PowerPoint presentation from Speaker Bosma, or Brian Bosma, who presented. And one of the things that I thought was, we had paid into this fund, and that one of the angles, or one of the things that we were looking at, was trying to recapture all of the money that Lawrence paid into this fund, where we hadn't had any projects done. But I, I see here, though, that we're paying back a prorata of 300,000, I don't have it open now, 300-plus thousand. So where, can you remind us where that conversation ended and how?
So to kind of recap the, what's in front of us tonight, the estimated user fees for this year are about 1.8 million. Deductions from that number include the Lawrence parcel fees, which is about 450,000 now. That's a number that's been accumulating over about a 15-year period. So those were assessments on government properties that Lawrence didn't pay because of the reasons, you know, the issues with stormwater. So that's in effect, kind of a one-time, you know, deduction off of that million eight. But then the second deduction we have is prorata debt share. So that's the debt that's been issued prior to us withdrawing, where there were projects that were either in Lawrence or for the benefit of Lawrence. So we will still have to pay that amount each year, which is roughly in the range of 300,000 to 400,000 in any given year, kind of declines over time. So that will continue to be a deduction off of our total fee. So then, back to the question on the amounts that were paid into stormwater prior to today, I do know, as part of this agreement, there were some projects that were identified in Lawrence, and I may ask Sri to, if he has any, I don't have those notes in front of me.
Yeah, so basically. Yeah, I think, I think we had some question about whether or not they were really Lawrence projects. So, yeah, please Sri.
No, so there are two projects that Indianapolis have promised. I mean, there were some older projects, to answer your question, Tom, there were some older projects that Indianapolis did, which from our, I mean, from our money, and it benefited Lawrence. How much it benefited was like, you know, it's a past deal. But as part of the deal that we, as part of this getting out of the stormwater, Indianapolis has committed to do two projects in Lawrence in the neck in this year. It will go to bid this year. One is a trade district project, which is around three and a half, four million, and then another one is the Richard Phase Two. Richard Phase One was a Lawrence project that was done last year. The second part of that is, it's going to happen sometime this year too. So those two projects probably will be around six and a half, seven million, including design and other stuff. Indianapolis is completely committed to doing it, and I am in conversations with the designers and Indy team and the project managers on a weekly basis on the schedule, and so, yeah, so they will go out to bid, and those are completely benefiting Lawrence. It has nothing to do with Marion County, it's in Lawrence, and it's going to benefit in our residents.
And then the last question I have, so this prorata debt share payment that's on slide number four, Jason, so that, that's the debit that's going to be applied against what we're collecting from Lawrence residents. I mean, that's your estimation, or am I reading that right?
That's the actual number, so that's debt that's already been issued for Indy stormwater, and this is debt that started, was issued years ago, not just the last couple of years. So while we were part of that agreement, we owe, roughly speaking, 5% of the debt that they had outstanding at the time that either funded projects in Lawrence, like I said, or for the benefit of Lawrence. So that was our share of the debt prior to us withdrawing. So we will owe that, those amounts until 2042.
Got it.
On the flip side, you know, the, that 420, or 457 number will not continue to be an annual reduction, and the 1.8 million per the rates with Indianapolis should gradually increase over time as well. So the, the net available for projects in Lawrence should go up.
Okay, yeah, you answered my question. My next question was the parcel fees, is that going to be an ongoing? But it sounds to me like that's a one-time.
What will happen going forward is we just won't pay our parcel fees?
Oh, right, because it's our, it's within our, got it. All right, thank you.
I'm sorry, I have a question about.
All right, it sounds like there's no further questions, so, oh, go ahead.
Counselor Dunning, I do have a question. It just, just that conversation that Counselor Chevlat and Controller Fenwick were having just jogged another question for me. Weren't we supposed to get money back as well when we, I thought that was sort of like the driver for the date that we actually pulled out of the stormwater agreement?
Given that, oh, go ahead Sri.
So the reason why we pulled out of stormwater before December 31st was that we could collect all the money from last year. So if, that was the reason why we have, we rushed it and got out of it before December 31st. Anytime after December 31st, we would have lost all the last year's money.
So that, you're saying that the line, the 1.8 million, what was the number?
The user fee number is 1.8 million, roughly, is the estimate.
And that's what we expected, based on, you know, what they presented to us in December?
Correct.
Okay. Okay, sorry, I couldn't remember the exact number, so thank you.
Yeah, I mean, it was, it was roughly 1.8, and then the final calculations showed up to be a little over that. So, yeah, so it was always this dollar amount.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Yeah, we'll go ahead.
I think Counselor Giles, before I wanted to ask my question, made a motion to approve or accept, I'm guessing.
Yes.
Was that what?
I believe that's what he said, exactly.
Yes, can you hear me? Yes, I was trying to make the, a motion to recommend to full council for approval.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. I'll do a roll call vote.
Yes.
Counselor Giles?
Yes.
Counselor Chevlat?
Uh-oh.
I think I'm breaking up a little bit. Can you hear me okay?
I was too.
All right, can you hear me better now? All right, I fell out of commercial. All right, sorry, I cut off when I said Counselor Chevlat. All right, and Counselor Dunning? Yes. All right, so we have, we'll recommend that on to the full council. And Kathy, I had to step away from my other monitor where my paperwork was. Can you read the next item on the agenda for us, please?
Resolution Three, 2021. A resolution approving the form of lease between the City of Lawrence and Arts for Lawrence for the Visual Arts Center building.
Okay, and I believe there was an amendment that went, that was sent out earlier today that went along with that. Is that correct, Chris, or could you give some background?
Sure. This new city attorney reached out to me last week with some of the same concerns that I had addressed last month about the fact that it was my understanding that while the building had been moved, the legal transfer of the building from FHRA to the city had not yet been completed, and her suggestion was this new Section 2.02 that you see in front of you, which basically makes the lease contingent upon the transfer of that building, which has to be approved by the Board of Works. That certainly, from a legal review perspective, makes sense to me, and I see that Judy Byron is on the call. I asked her to be on, on the committee, at the committee meeting tonight, because I thought you might have questions. So that is all I know, unless you have other questions for me, Counselor Dunning.
Can you give us some, like, a broad overview of this real quick, just so everybody's on the same page of the whole thing, plus the amendment?
Are you talking to me, Sean?
Judy, either you or Chris, whoever feels their most expert on this one.
So I'm happy to fill you in. The lease is, of course, of the Visual Arts Center, a very unusual remodeling project. The building was donated by the Fort Harrison Reuse Authority, picked up and moved onto city property. And that's where we come into the odd part of transferring the ownership. There's, so from Arts for Lawrence's point of view, we need a lease from the city. The building is supposed to be owned by the city and occupied by Arts for Lawrence. We are up against a time crunch. There is one big hangup on the project, and that is that the windows were not able to be restored, and so we have to replace the windows. And because it's a historic building, we went through a lot of iterations with the DNR Historic Architect, and are, have ordered custom-made windows that are metal awning windows, like the windows that were originally in the building. That being said, that order, those windows were approved by the DNR architect and went into production on February 8th, and they won't be installed in the building until the earliest, the last week of April, first week of May. And so I think there's a couple of chicken and eggs here. I think the city is interested in waiting to transfer title until the windows are in. And Arts for Lawrence, of course, would, would like to be able to get in the building and prepare it for public use prior to then.
Okay, I think that gives us a broad overview. Any counselors have any questions regarding the amendment or the, where we're at in the process?
Do we have a, can anyone tell us what the, I mean, I understand, well, I understand the point that's being brought up about the windows. I just want to understand what the title transfer has to do with the windows. Like, it's sitting, it's sitting on our property, and we've already agreed as part of taking the funds for the endowment, that this was part of, you know, a phase with the agreement that we had, and we are all in support of that. So I just, I don't, I guess I'm struggling to understand why not having windows doesn't make it a structure that we can then transfer ownership for.
There's no reason why it couldn't be done. That's just the city's preference that the windows be completed, that it certainly could be done anytime.
So the.
We have somebody here from the administration that explained that. And I apologize, Counselor Chavis, there was a delay there, I think I cut you off.
No, no, you're fine. I just wanted to see if somebody could explain that, because I'm struggling. And it's, it seems like it's going to have a significant impact on their ability to move forward with getting a, you know, residential artist on board and, and actually getting that, you know, building to where we're going to be able to use it, and, you know, I just, I'm just trying to understand it.
The moving of the Visual Arts Center, the building itself, became more problematic, I think the deeper we got into it. The building actually had been moved once before, and the struggle was, the building is actually owned by the FHRA at this point. And the understanding among Judy and myself and Alitha always has been that once the movement, once the building was moved and completed, the city would then, of course, offer the lease, and that's just been an ongoing and a long agreed-upon change. What we couldn't find was a title or a idea of how the building itself, how the ownership was going to be transferred to the city. The other part of it was that, since the FHRA owned the building, and we were going to take essentially possession of the building, that there were going to be a substantial amount of funds used as a cultural campus grant to get the VAC in position to where it could operate as a visual arts center. My understanding, and Judy, correct me if I'm wrong here, but I understand your desire now is to bring in an art colony to be a part of the Visual Arts Center. Is that, is that accurate?
The, the business plan for the Visual Arts Center is for it to be run by more or less volunteers. And so there are two studios, a ceramic studio and an upstairs, any, any kind of art medium studio. So there will be two resident artists that will get free rent to have a place to create their art, but they will also oversee the management of the building. So that is the business plan for it. And then, of course, Arts for Lawrence staff would support that, and there will be art classes in the building and a monthly gallery show, and, yeah.
So the only thing that, that happened here, and I think this was nobody's fault, really, was when the building got moved, Judy was doing her due diligence and won the windows in the building, and I don't know if she knew they'd had to be replaced or whatever, when we, she thought about trying to replace them, there was certainly an historical integrity to the building itself. So she then had to order the windows. I'm not sure what the expense of those windows is going to be, and really, kind of none of my business, quite frankly, but I know it was going to be pretty expensive. The concern was that if you're going to adopt a building, so to speak, for the city, the concern was, what, are we adopting the building as is, or are we adopting, adopting a finished building? I think it was always the intent of myself, and I think Judy also, that when the city then accepted the building from FHRA, it would be completed. The fly in the ointment has been, for quite some time, getting these windows in, getting them installed. There is a risk, certainly, the council can make the decision, but there is a risk in accepting a building that's unfinished, once it becomes the City of Lawrence's building, it would seem to me, it becomes our responsibility as a city to maintain the building. If you look at the lease, you'll see that major repairs are still going to be the responsibility of the city, once we, once we receive it. The windows would certainly be something that would classify as a major repair for the city, but I believe that's always been assumed that, that that would be paid for out of the grant. And Judy, you can jump in. out of the grant, and Judy, you can jump in there. I see you're wanting to, to, uh, add in here too, but go ahead.
Um, I just wanted to put you at ease that, um, part of the grant reporting is to make sure that Phase 3 is final, and so, um, the Lilly Endowment will not be happy if we don't actually put the windows in that building for you. It's just a matter of, like you said, um, the due diligence to the Historic Architect at the DNR, um, and getting the type of windows that would be approved, and those windows have to be custom-made, and so, that has put us very far behind schedule of having an absolutely complete building. Um, the building has been complete, aside from the windows, um, since the middle of February.
In defense of Judy, by the way, so everybody knows this, she thought, and certainly I thought, that we'd take possession back in November, wasn't it, Judy? It was back in November when we thought we'd actually take possession. That was the original date, uh, so these windows have, have been problematic for everybody involved.
So, Mayor, would you feel comfortable, um, with, I mean, if the, I guess it's a, it's a real, it's a hard situation, I think, for everybody to be in, but I think that it sounds to me like the, the main concern is, is that to ensure that when we take possession of the building, or ownership, transfer ownership, um, that we will not be saddled with any expenses as a city. So, can't we just spell that out specifically in the resolution and proceed with the transfer of ownership?
I think, I think we can, Lisa. I've gotten a couple different opinions from attorneys that, uh, their biggest hangup right now is to accept a building with no clear title. Uh, at one point, there was the assumption that since it was on our property, it must be ours, uh, and that has since been going back and forth. I believe it, I believe it's ours. I believe the full intent of the FHRA is to transfer the title to, to us. Uh, I haven't seen, but I don't think it's going to be a problem getting the legal work done to be able for us to actually accept title to the building. Now, as Judy will tell you, this building's got a storied past, uh, and so, it's got a history that's tough to track down. Uh, it's been moved twice already, so the concern, obviously, among, from the legal point of view, was who's, who's got clear title of it? And I don't know, I, I don't know that any of us can even answer that right now at this point. I don't have any fear at all of accepting the building for the City of Lawrence, uh, and I fully anticipated this to happen back in November. Uh, my concern was, from the city's point of view, is just because we accept it, doesn't mean it's ours. In other words, whose, whose was it to give to us? Well, the assumption was, oh, is it his FHRA? Uh, we got a little bit of different take on that from the FHRA's attorney, and there was the assumption it was already ours at one point, uh, which, that wasn't accurate either, but to answer your question, I don't have a problem at all, and matter of fact, the lease, as you're looking at it, the only, the only issue I had with the lease at all was that originally Judy wanted a longer lease that would have extended beyond my current term, and so, the council told me probably would be a better idea to give this to the common council to judge that than for you to make that decision unilaterally, so that's how it came into your lap.
Okay, so, is there, um, is your attorney, is she, I know, Chris, I know you've been working directly with her, is there, have you all determined who actually has title of that building right now?
Well, you have title to the real estate and title to, I, I, I will agree, and I, and I'm honestly, uh, President Chavis hesitant to comment. I have been talking to the city attorney, but I know, uh, Alitha has been working on this too. I, in my mind, quite frankly, it isn't really unique in that if you think about, for a moment, a new construction, you would sign a contract that is contingent upon completion of a building, and title will transfer essentially once the building occupancy permit is issued. So, it is a contract with a contingency that a building is completed. That is something that is very common in the law, and that is something certainly the city could have done to, in my opinion, avoid any liability for the building before it is fully completed. So, you know, I think Bruce commented it could have been done, it could have been done. If that's not the way the city wishes to do it, I, I understand, but I don't think it's necessarily a hurdle that could not have legally had a workaround and already been done, frankly.
I, I didn't mean to-
Take the position-
What I thought, um, Counselor Chavis and, and, and the mayor were not communicating on is, I believe Counselor Chavis was asking, well, if the Lilly Endowment is going to put the windows in, why can't you just go ahead and transfer the building, knowing that they're going to put the windows in, and it's not going to be an expense to the city? Uh, we don't care what the paperwork is between reuse and the city. If, if you believe there needs to be a transfer in writing, fine, but I, I, I don't think there's a, a real need for the windows to be in before that, that happens, uh, but...
I think, I believe-
I have a question, Mr. Chair.
Last time I spoke, um, to our attorney was, all we needed to have added to this lease was a contingency statement about, we will take possession upon the building being finished, and that point on, everything else, I think, is good.
That seems, that seems fair.
That's what I, great, thank you. I mean, is there, am I missing something there? Because I think that is a good-
It's a, it's a, it's a blind contingency, that's all you have to add to.
Go ahead, Counselor Giles, I understand you have a question.
A couple of questions. Who insures the building?
City does.
Currently, today?
Lawrence.
Currently, it's under what's called a builder's risk policy. When things are under construction, there's an overall policy that, that covers everything. As soon as the building is accepted by the city, the city will, um, uh, cover property, uh, issues, and AFL will be covering liability issues.
Okay, so, we can get insurance, I just want to make sure that without having title and everything, uh, even though we have mutual agreement, I want to make sure that the city had everything that it needed to button everything up legally as an owner, you know?
Once we take possession, if we take possession of the building, it'll come under our policy.
Counselor Denny, I'm sorry, just to be clear, so, we're clear on what we're talking about? I, I just want to make sure we understand, what is before the council is the lease between the city and, uh, Lawrence Arts. That's what's before you in this resolution. There is a separate building transfer agreement that is for the Board of Works to approve. So, what this lease is saying is, until the Board of Works approves the building transfer agreement, this lease cannot go into effect. Just want to make sure everybody was clear on that. Talking about two different legal instruments.
Right, right.
Yeah, just, I just, just so I'm, uh, so, the, the email states from you, Chris, the new city attorney has requested an amendment to section 2 dot 02, which we would be amending this, which is before us, of the lease that is before you at tonight's council, so that Arts for Lawrence cannot take possession of the building until the Board of Works approves the transfer agreement. So, that kind of contradicts what you just said.
Hmm, I don't think, Counselor, I, I'm sorry, maybe I don't understand you, but-
I'm, I'm reading, I'm reading the email from you that was sent, and it says, "The new city attorney has requested an amendment to section 2 dot 02 of the lease that is before you," because you just said the lease that's before us tonight, so there's an amendment that's being suggested, so that the Arts for Lawrence cannot take possession of the building until Board of Works approves the transfer. You said, "What's before you tonight is the lease," but then there's another action that happens for the Board of Works.
Let me jump in here real quick.
So, I'm confused, because we're amending something that the Board of Works is going to be looking at.
Let me jump in here real quick to, to answer that question, Tom, is that the, um, well, the amendment or the effective amendment is, is with regard to the city, uh, in terms of, because of taking the building on, it doesn't have any to do with the lease at all. We're, we, we are fine with the lease, we have been fine with the lease for quite some time. The only thing the amendment's going to do is when the effective date of that lease begins.
Okay.
Effective at least, well, it will begin once the lease has been approved and we have possession of the building.
And so, Judy, just to sum it up, and Chris, oh, Chris, I cut you off, please go ahead again, and then I'll-
I'm sorry. So, the lease, the amendment to the lease says the lease doesn't go into effect until the Board of Works approves the transfer agreement, essentially is what it does, Counselor Shavlot.
And so, the net effect of that, and, uh, Judy, correct me if I'm wrong here, then if we, you can't do what you want to do in prep for opening day, and if the lease doesn't go into effect sooner than possession?
That's correct.
Is that, that's some of the, okay. And so, what we're talking about is the lease allowing you to prep while possession is still kind of a, a separate topic? Is that some of the, Mayor and Judy, or am I a little off there?
She needs both, she needs both to happen ASAP. That's what, that's what they need.
The way the lease is written right now is that we will not even be able to get into the building until the windows are completed and the, 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 the transfer agreement has been signed between reuse and, and, uh, the city.
Yeah, so she needs, um, she needs both, and the ask is that we get both done as quickly as possible, so I think what I was asking Mayor Collier is, if, if, um, we move forward as a council and approve this, basically a commitment from him that, that, you know, the second part that needs to happen, the second legal instrument, can happen as quickly as possible.
Yeah, there's, the only gray area right now is that the building currently is owned by the FHRA. As far as access to the building, as long as Alitha Dunson's okay with granting access to that building, I'm fine with that, and I think she is too. Whether, whether whoever owns it right now, one of the two of us are going to end up with it. FHRA owns it now, we will own it later. If Alitha gives Arts for Lawrence, wants to go in and work in the building, that's fine.
Judy, I see you have a comment you're wanting to make.
I, I think the mayor just answered my question. That is our biggest concern, is that if we have to wait until the windows are in and, um, and then the title is transferred, and then the lease goes into effect, then Arts for Lawrence's hands are tied when we try to get the building ready for the grand opening. And we, we anticipate, um, with the windows earliest being installed, the last week of April, the first week of May, and because we've heard that there could be delays due to COVID, um, we could end up with, you know, days before the grand opening, and I just wanted to make sure we could have access to the building and start preparing it for, um, for the-
I didn't want to speak for Alitha, but I'm sure she-
It sounds like everybody, the administration, um, um, the council, and I've talked to many of the council members, um, that, you know, it sounds like we're all on the same page to be committed to, um, do what needs to be done to make sure that you can move forward with what, you know, to prepare for opening day.
I do have, I do have further questions, though.
And you know what, we're gonna, I'm sorry, uh, Counselor Chairman Denny, can you, can you move us along, because we are out of time?
Yeah.
Well, I don't know how, but, well, I'm gonna know-
Three seconds, real quick, time, Counselor Giles.
I'm rushed, I'm gonna no vote if I don't understand. The mayor just stood up and basically said, "I don't own the building, Alitha owns the building, and if it's, if it's okay with her today for her to go in, Arts for Lawrence, it's okay with me." So, I'm just saying, if we approve this lease, and then Alitha says, "No," we don't really have the power to let somebody into something that we don't really own today.
Actually, the lea- the lease is not, does not require that the windows go in, that is solely the, what the city is saying. The lease just says, "Once there's a transfer, we can go in." The city can tran- can take, can, can do the transfer now if it wants, it's just that-
That's not what I'm talking about. I'm saying, if we leave the building with the, boarded up, as it is today, if we approve this lease, and you guys go in, I thought the mayor said, "Alitha owns the building today." That's all I'm trying to say.
Can I clarify something real quickly? Tyrell, the building, um, was moved on to, um, a basement, and it has been renovated. So, the, the, the part that the reuse authority owns is some brick and mortar, um, and the, the permit to renovate it was, was under the city's name, so-
That's a big piece of information, thank you.
You're welcome.
So, right now, we have a, a, a resolution, and we have a proposed amendment, so is there any motions? I would entertain any motions at this time.
I'll make a motion.
For?
For, uh, recommending to full council for support. To moving it to-
As it is written?
As, as the amended, yes.
But we, we technically, I'm sorry, counselors, we had a vote on the amendment, and then you vote on, do pass the amended version, if that's what you want to do.
Correct, so are you vote, are you making a motion, Counselor Chavis, to accept the amendment? Okay.
I'll second that.
Second, okay, we have, um, the amendment has a motion and a second, so, I'll take a roll call vote. Counselor Chavis?
Yes.
Counselor Shavlot?
Yes.
Counselor Giles?
Yes.
Counselor Denny? Yes. And so, now, we can accept a mo- or I can accept a motion, the, the committee can accept a motion, uh, for the amended, uh, resolution.
Motion to accept the amended.
Okay, got a first and a, a motion and a second, uh, take the roll call vote again. Counselor Shavlot?
Yes.
Counselors Chavis?
Yes.
Counselor Giles?
Yes.
Counselor Denny? Yes. So, uh, this, uh, votes four to zero to be recommended to the full council. Uh, no other business before us, uh, meeting adjourned. Thank you, everybody.